That's come to order for the five o'clock session. Right, there you are. How are you tonight, City Clerk? Can you, let's see, "Tonight, our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor V. Hill Coppler, our salute to the flag of New Mexico from Councilor Villarreal, and our invocation from Councilor Rivera." If we could all rise, please. Welcome, everyone. Instead of the traditional invocation, I wanted to read a short story, if that's okay. "As a man was passing the elephants, he suddenly stopped confused by the fact that these huge creatures were being held by only a small rope tied to their front leg. No chains, no cages. It was obvious that the elephants could at any time break away from their bonds, but for some reason, they did not. He saw a trainer nearby and asked why these animals just stood there and made no attempt to get away. Well, trainer said, when they are very young and much smaller, we use the same-sized rope to tie them, and at that age, it's enough to hold them. As they grow up, they're conditioned to believe they cannot break away. They believe the rope can still hold them, so they never try to break free. The man was amazed. These animals could at any time break free from their bonds, but because they believed they couldn't, they were stuck right where they were. Like the elephants, how many of us go through life hanging on to a belief that we cannot do something simply because we failed at it once before? Failure is part of learning. We should never give up the struggle in life." With that, are there any remembrances or honors that we would like to? Councilor Lindell?
Thank you, Councilor Rivera. I just wanted to acknowledge that the mayor and I just walked into City Hall from having attended the Santa Fe overdose memorial. It's a memorial that honors the lives of people that no longer have a voice. People that weren't always addicts, people that were loved. This year, the ages were from 21 to 62. We were also given a piece of information at this memorial service that since 2010, 8,000, 8,000, 8,000 addicts have been revived by a family member, a friend, or another addict. Not a professional caregiver, someone else that had access to a drug that can save their lives. Eight thousand. There's a memorial quilt. The mayor and I stood there and looked at that, and it's a hard visual that those lovely people can't speak for themselves anymore. But I would encourage everyone to look into the Santa Fe overdose memorial. It's meaningful to this community. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, if you would all join us for a moment of silence to honor the memory of these individuals. Thank you, Mayor. So, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Weber?
Present.
Councilor Beto?
Is excused.
Thank you. Councilor Harris? Councilor Ives?
Here.
Councilor Lindell?
Here.
Councilor Rivera?
Here.
Councilor Mayor Worth? Councilor V. Hill Coppler?
Here.
Councilor Villarreal?
Present.
Thank you. You do have a quorum present, Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there changes to the agenda tonight that we know about, City Clerk?
Yes, sir. We would like to remove item 14 off of this afternoon's agenda, and this is the resolution regarding Palo Verde Nuclear Power Plant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
To clarify, it's been postponed till the next council meeting?
Right, it's going to be-
On September 11th.
It'll be referred to Finance Committee meeting?
Yes.
It'll be back, but for tonight's purposes, it's not on the agenda.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other changes to the existing agenda before we move on? So can we get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there items from the consent calendar that folks wish to have taken off at this time? Yes, Councilwoman?
Item F?
Item F will be taken off the consent calendar. Anything else on this side of the House? Yes, sir.
Quick question on K.
The question is K?
K.
So quick, so we'll take it off as well for your question? Okay.
Move for approval as amended?
Second.
All right, very well. Could we call the roll on that, please?
Councilor Harris? Councilor Ives?
Yes.
Councilor Lindell? Councilor Rivera? Councilor Mayor Worth? Councilor V. Hill Coppler?
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Let's go on to the minutes of the August 14, 2019, regular meeting of the City Council. We have minutes. Are there changes, amendments to those minutes? Or if not, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there presentations that I'm unaware of? All right, thank you. In that case, let's move forward to item F. Councilor V. Hill Coppler?
Thank you.
It's your, it's, you have the floor.
I believe all of you have a letter in front of you. Looks like this. And this is the insurance offered to Santa Fe residents, or homeowners, I should say, who may want to partake of it because they could have a failing sewer, and this insurance may or may not cover some of it. And this has been through committees, sometimes twice, and at one committee, I think it was Public Utilities, some time ago, the committee agreed that the city should write a letter, our own letter, to insert into what our homeowners receive because it appeared, and many of our constituents thought, that it was an official city insurance directive, so to speak?
Right.
To purchase this insurance because it comes with the city logo and such. And it's very formal, so it does look like something you ought to pay attention to. At any rate, we, the committee agreed the city should work on a letter that explains to these homeowners that this is clearly voluntary. And so, we produced this letter that you see in front of you, and it's very straightforward. Mr. Shannon Jones and I worked on it, and apparently, it was presented to the Service Line Warranties of America, and they scoffed at putting this letter in. And they, if you look in your packet, they kind of rewrote it, but it's more of a marketing letter. And we also wanted them not to use our logo, or use our logo on the letter that they offered to write, which I don't think is acceptable. So, we're kind of at a standstill. According to the last Public Utilities Committee meeting, and Mr. Jones, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they were not really amenable to using our letter. So, I'm not sure where we go from here, but I find it somewhat distasteful that a company would rule or dictate to the City Council what we want in this, I think gracious maneuver for this insurance company to use our logo and kind of be very forthright about, you kind of should have this insurance. So, I'm not sure where we stand from here, but, you know, if any business could come and do this and tell us how we should run the show, I just don't think that's the way it should work. So, I know Councilor Villarreal has some concerns about this, and Shannon Jones, you may certainly jump in and correct me at any time here. So, I don't know if Councilor Villarreal would want to say anything at this point, or?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I share the same concern. I think a few of us on utilities discussed important points that would clarify that we are not connected to this insurance option, and though, in the letter that you see on your, on the dais, it's essentially saying that this information is voluntary, that your utility line may already be covered by your homeowner's insurance, and to check with that. So, it's letting you know that there are other options, and it's informational. I think that it's our role as a city to inform the public and our residents what options they have. And granted, this relationship we have with Servant Service Warranties of America, it does provide a discount because we are in an informal partnership, which I think is good. It allows for a discount for residents. However, I think it's important that we be able to determine how we want to communicate this, and I thought the letter that was drafted by Councilwoman V. Hill Coppler and staff, that I thought it was reasonable. So, when we look at their message, I think it ended up being a lot more self-promoting for them, a premier provider of home emergency repair programs, blah, blah, blah. And it just says a little, one sentence that's somewhat connected to what we had drafted. So, I personally don't feel like this is what we wanted, and I feel like we are the ones that determine what we want to provide and information to our residents. So, I'm just wondering if there's any option, Mr. Jones, if you could tell us if there's something else that we could work through, or if this is kind of where we're, where we stand after many iterations, and I know you've communicated and taken a lot of time on this, so I appreciate that. Can you share anything else that might be a possibility for us?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Villarreal and Councilor V. Hill Coppler, members of the governing body, we have, I feel like we have labored, right, on this. I feel that we have clearly communicated to the firm. I did include a couple of the email correspondences in the packet, and ultimately, the firm, Service Warranties of America, did agree. They said that there's no problem to include a letter, but then when they sent back the draft of the letter, it'd be included, was not accepted at PUC, and the direction was given, right, to go back. I think it was very clear that there was four points that were wanting to be communicated, and were very clear on, to me, on how those were being communicated. From what I recall, it was not for me to write some elaborate letter, write four bullet points. I think that's what was communicated, and that's what we put together. I do agree that the communication coming back, really, it's really conflicting interest in what I feel like we're trying to communicate, what we want communicated, and probably what they feel is in their best interest to communicate. And I think it's evident in the letters and how they manipulate that. I think the only other thing that I can add is, again, so this is something that is coming forth for an amendment. We have a contract that expired, so this is amending their contract. If it was not approved, this company still has the right to mail marketing information to homeowners, and it would not bear the city logo. In exchange for them putting the logo, is where we've, through a competitive process, looked for a discounted rate. I guess for me, again, I'm more than willing to continue to work, to work with this company, to work at the will of the governing body. I will continue to correspond with them and serve in that role. I don't know how much more successful I can be, but I am definitely committed to, again, whatever the wishes of the governing body. I think other things that I would add is, there is data, and I apologize if it's not in the packet, we've done this a few times, but I believe there's about 3,000 homes that have purchased this service, so those are customers, and at their discretion can continue to be customers or not. So, again, really looking at what is the extended reach of the marketing. Again, this only targets homeowners. They're the only ones that are eligible, not tenants or rentals. You know, but again, I agree, so there may be a few select that may still get the mailer, and does that affect their decision by having the city logo or not? I definitely think the marketing company believes that there's some validity to that is why they're asking us to put it on there. I think it does send a message. I think the council is doing a good job of vetting about what it is and what is the best interest of protecting the residents. I think it is an interesting situation that we're in, and again, I probably already said too much. I'm more than willing to keep communicating with them if that's the will, or we can do something different.
Councilor Lindell?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jones, do we have a history of past claims with this company, and how the claims have been handled? Has there been poor, fair, good, or excellent consumer ratings of this company, and how they've responded to claims?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lindell, I think that's a great question. I would, probably how I would verbalize my experience is, I've probably had just as many calls over the use of the city's logo than the claims. I will say, in my tenure of doing this, that there have been a couple of times where there have been issues with the claims. I would say with even myself and Mr. Nick Scaville before me pushing some communications that maybe were able to help some of those claims get through, I can only recall one instance where I was contacted. The claim was not approved because when you sign up for the home protection plan, you are forced to use a list of their contractors, and this particular individual had used their own plumber that was not on the list, and that was, and that was kind of a breaking point on that one. That's the only claim I can remember that I know of that wasn't, that wasn't processed or honored.
Have we ever solicited and received bids from other firms to offer similar services?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lindell, even to, so this was a four-year contract that went through a competitive procurement, so then, two years ago, we issued the same request for proposals. There were two firms that submitted proposals, and the evaluation team looked at the dollar amount of coverage and the discount emphasis that was placed in the proposals. So, this was done through a competitive process, and there was other one proponent who submitted at that time.
Councilor Ives?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious about this 10% in the use of the logo. What are the parameters on that use? In other words, what do we have to do for city residents to get a 10% discount?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Ives, so ultimately, the discount is allowing them to put, so the city, the city shield is placed, I believe, both on the envelope and on the insert, on the letter, on the insert. So, all we're really doing is authorize them to use that shield in their marketing. Other than that, we do not receive, there's no compensation that we get back from the company. It is just for that reduced rate, and we, before they send out any mailings, I mean, it is clear through the agreement that that is submitted to me, and I have an opportunity to review what is going to be mailed, and that I do have to respond back to them with an approval. But other than that, that's all we do.
You just said that they can use the letter, or the shield, on a letter. Is that the city letter we're contemplating, or are we talking about the company's own information?
It is the company's correspondence.
And that's as reflected on the materials in our packet, yes?
Yes, sir.
You know, I personally see no issue in the city including a letter of its own. Sounds like the company had agreed to that, even though they may not agree to our particular form of letter, but that seems to be our discretion rather than theirs, if we're still allowing them to put the city shield on the other documents that the company itself has prepared and is sending out. I do have suggested changes to the draft letter we have on our seats that helps to tighten it up, although I would note that the four points covered in the memo in the packet, or there are actually five, I guess, that those certainly read perfectly well, although I think the fifth one with regards to use of the logo is a little unclear because it doesn't tell you where that logo is appearing. So, yeah, I'd love to see you make modifications and send it out, as we wish to see it sent out. You could, again, I have proposed changes, but you could certainly use the four bullet points that appear in the memo, and then modify it to the fifth one to note that use of this, by this, by the warranty provider on their paperwork qualifies city residents for a 10% discount, so has been authorized in this instance. A very simple factual statement that this has been done to gain an economic benefit for the people of Santa Fe. So, I would tend to agree. We can, I think we have the power to put our letter in there and let folks know that, where the city stands on this and why we're doing it, which is to get them a discount on something that otherwise might cost them more money, and then it's up to them as to whether or not they need it or want it. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Others? Councilor Harris?
Quick cop, a quick comment on a familiar topic, and this is something you'll need to check in. Assuming that the amendment is approved in some fashion, you know, the PSA calls for professional liability. They don't really provide it on their certificate of coverage or certificate of insurance. They've got tremendous, they've got an umbrella plus excess liability to the tune of $15 million, so clearly, they're covering situations that could be quite bad. But I don't know if that's the same thing as what we require. So, you just may need to amend the PSA in some fashion, but have risk management look into that if you would.
Sir. Councilor Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jones, after the last PUC, I believe there was direction given to go back and try to, again, negotiate those four points into, into the letter or sending out our own letter ourselves, and how did, how did those discussions go?
Rivetta, so we did say that I'm still engaged in conversations with this firm, but at this point, there was, there was nothing additional that I could add. So, again, I'm more than happy to continue those conversations. So, again, it's not that they didn't said that they would no longer talk with me. It's just kind of this, almost like a used car back-and-forth negotiation, but, so I did, I did communicate the point of the PUC to them, and so I'd say we're still engaged in that conversation.
So, we've been really going back and forth for how long now?
Say, probably about four, I'd say maybe five months.
And there hasn't been much movement in, really what we're asking for in the letter that they're producing, and we're here tonight to either approve or deny, or maybe push down the road a little bit. So, what would be your recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Rivetta, I think, again, I would say the same. I mean, I'm at the pleasure of the governing body. I have no issue continuing to work with this group. If there's outcomes that we're trying to get, I feel like I am clearly communicating those, what those points are, and, but I can continue to do so and try to get us where maybe the governing body is more comfortable.
Ms. McSherry, if we deny this tonight, is it still something that can be talked about and negotiated, or would it then have to be resent out to RFP or RFP?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Rivera, this isn't one that I've been actively involved in, so I'm not, I'm not sure. I'd have to look at the original RFP.
If I could add, so the RFP was actually done in 2018, so this is amendment to the contract. I think if we were looking to kind of like restart and see if there is a different competitive firm, that we would reissue the RFP if we didn't amend it.
And I guess that was my question, is if we deny it tonight, we're really, if we're going to do it, we're really starting that process over again?
I believe so.
You think there's any room for discussion, or do you believe that they've sort of held firm to what they want to do?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Rivetta, again, in my own opinion, I think there's probably still some room for improvement, right, through negotiations. Ultimately, your vote is still what determines whether they include the logo. My personal opinion is there's probably a couple of words that probably cross their marketing red flags, right? marketing red flags, right? Just with the correspondence, right, they don't like to call it insurance, right? It's a protection plan. So homeowners insurance, and we're saying you should check with your homeowners insurance because this may already be covered. And I feel like they like to say is like most homeowners insurance doesn't cover this. You know, I mean, those are, so on one part, it's word smithing and semantics, but when messaging and marketing, I feel like, right, those are, those are the strategies that come in. And I don't know if like, if those things that I would ever be able to accomplish. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah. And I, you know, I feel like we're bending over backwards to allow this to continue and we don't really have to do that. They should be acquiescing to what we want to do and how we want to do it. And there's just been too much back and forth, I think, to get the, to, for me to have the feeling like they're willing to, to do that. So I'm inclined to get out of the warranty business and just continue as we had before that. So that's my opinion.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
So do other cities allow their logos to be used in this fashion?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Omerworth, it's, it's been a little bit, I know that was, questions early on when we approved the contract before that there was a listing. So there are other cities that they do partner with. I apologize, I don't have that list, but I could go back to my archives and, and see which other cities they're actually partnering with.
I just wonder, and do they put a letter in and does their letter look like ours or like theirs or?
Again, in my opinion, through my conversations with them, it seemed like we were coming a little bit out of left field with this supplemental letter from the city included in the packet.
Mr. Jones, if you look at the exchange of emails coming from the company dated Tuesday, June 11th, they're responding to you and they say, "We wouldn't be able to include the exact letter, but other partners have wanted us to include similar language and we drafted the attached letter that would go along with the offer letter. It covers," this is verbatim, "so it covers off on many of the same points in your letter and we have gotten positive feedback. Would it be acceptable to include this version?" I don't see a response to that June 11 email from them. It seems to me the correct answer would be, "No, it wouldn't be acceptable to include this version. We want to continue to pursue the version we want if you want to use our logo." But it isn't a take it or leave it email. It's a, "Here's what we've done with others, do you find it acceptable?" If the governing body says, "No, we don't find it acceptable, but we are not so ready, we're not ready perhaps to dismiss this entire offer." We could go back and attempt to do more editing, writing, and inclusion of a different letter. I have a, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but this is salient to your point.
On that point? So, so I guess my, my last question was, if we postpone this, do we get their attention? And rather than deny it, maybe that's too, too far to go, but maybe what we do is we postpone it to work this issue out and respond to this June 11th email and then see where we are. That's all I have.
It's a suggestion. I have, before we get into the motion business, I do have another question, if I may, Mr. Jones. You mentioned that they can continue to send letters out with or without our logo and with or without our potential discount offer. How, how does that list get produced for them to be able to send letters out?
Mr. Mayor, my belief is that you purchase contact information from firms.
It's a market, they simply have access to a market that they can purchase. The only question, they can continue, we have no idea really based on what we know to date, whether including our logo increases, decreases, or has no merit, no difference in the response rate. But we do know they want it.
That is correct.
Counsel Veale Copley.
Mr. Mayor, that information is readily available on the tax records. So any homeowner who plays, who pays property tax is easily gleaned and turned into a mailing list.
Okay. So we're not helping them, they're simply obtaining it through list agencies or, or tax records? Is there a sense of the council, is there a motion? Do we want to proceed on this? Counsel Ives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before making a motion, which I'm happy to do, I would simply note, you know, I've reread their proposed letter as we've been sitting here and factually, most of it does not seem inaccurate. And so for me, it's more a question of emphasis and I would think that a blending of the two letters actually should accomplish the purpose of both parties and move this forward. And happy to help if you get stuck on doing that. But the one thing I do note is that, and I mean, the thing, one of the things we're very sensitive to is just use of the city's logo. So we have in the packet one example of a potential use of that logo, but the contract itself seems to permit it for, the provider will compensate the city for the use of their logo by marketing the program to its citizens. And that suggests that that use by them could be continually, continual and in any additional marketing pieces that they care to put out. I suppose one of the amendments I'd love to see here is just that if something goes out using the city's logo, we get to look at it and approve it to make sure we're happy with the content because there's at least one statement in the draft letter that they had attached that I would take a little bit of issue with in terms of its phraseology. So that said, I would move to postpone this to the next city council meeting with directions to staff to attempt to redraft this letter in a way that is acceptable to both the city and based on the directions from, in discussion here before the council. And to further clarify the use of the service line warranties, use of the city's logo in additional marketing materials with the understanding that the city will have an opportunity to review and approve those before they go out.
Further discussion? Counsel Rivera.
Sorry, I'm just curious if the next council meeting is enough time with Labor Day and all the other city functions going on, if, if that gives you enough time to get everything that you need done?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Rivera, I appreciate that. And with all due respect, I think communicating directly with Service Warranty Lines of America on the letter, if, I think if there were certain, again, if we were amenable to using protection plan as opposed to warranty or insurance, that I would be able to execute that. If it's actually going back to the amendment and drafting it, then I would need, so if there was language that we wanted to add to the amendment, I would request more time to, for that to get drafted and get it, you know, vetted through legal and back into the packet on time.
Counsel Rivera.
If that's a friendly amendment to postpone it for a month, happy to.
Yes, it's a friendly amendment.
That's accepted as a friendly amendment by both the proposer and the second. All right, could you please call the roll?
Thank you. So this will be a postponement to September 25th. Counsel Ives. Counsel Lindell. Counsel Rivetta.
Yes.
Counsel Omerworth. Counsel Veale Copley.
Yes.
Counsel Viadiel.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate it. Counsel Rivera, that brings us to the comments or questions you had about item number K.
Yes, thank you. So it wasn't a conditional, a condition of approval, but it was a recommendation that you reach out to some of the users at Salvador Pettis, which are very vocal about the center that itself, and see if there were any recommendations about the plans, see if anything, any suggestions were made about what could be done. Was there any attempt to do that?
Mayor Weber, Counsel Rivera, no, sir, I have not had a chance to get anybody that uses the LP facility to look at it. The only, the only people that I will have look at it will be the, the people at the Parks and Rec right now that are over at the Fort Marcy facility.
All right. I know we had some issues at Fort Marcy when, when we did those restrooms and after, after the fact, we heard from many of the users about the issues and problems there. So I was hoping to nip that one in the bud before we actually got too far into it. Is there still any room for visiting with end users or even employees there to make sure we're right on with, with the plans?
Yeah. Mayor Weber, Counsel Rivera, yes, there is. I can definitely do that. The, the plans are being, this was a design build, so facility build can change their plans on any recommendation that's made by staff over at Parks and Rec or I'll give them the plans, I'll get with them. I don't, I can't this week, first and next week, and then I'll give them plans and have them start looking at them. And then they can also check with some of the staff or the people that use the LP facility and see what they think of it.
Yeah, I'd rather receive the information upfront than after, after construction's complete and then find out that we did something really wrong. So again, if you don't mind doing that, that would.
Sir, I do not.
All right. With that, I'll move for approval.
Second? Further discussion? Could you call the roll, please?
Counsel Lindell.
Yes.
Counsel Rivetta.
Yes.
Counsel Omerworth. Counsel Veale Copley.
Yes.
Counsel Viadiel.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Ives.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved.
Thank you. I believe that brings us to 11 on our agenda tonight, unless you're, see something I don't see, city clerk? Am I on the right page?
You're on the right page, number 11.
Always good to check. Thank you, ma'am. That is, we have items 11A, B, and C. Can we treat those individually or together?
We can do them together as long as everybody's fine with.
Okay. These, this is a request to publish notice of public hearing for item 11A, 11B, and 11C. Are there any questions or comments about any of those items? Their motion?
Move to approve items 11A, B, and C.
Okay. Is there a discussion? Could you call the roll, please?
Counsel Rivetta.
Yes.
Counsel Omerworth. Counsel Veale Copley.
Yes.
Counsel Viadiel.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Lindell. And Mayor Weber.
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Thank you very much. Item number 12. John, do you want to tell us what we're looking at here?
Thank you, Mayor and counselors. So what you have before you is the First Amendment to a funding agreement we have between the DOT and the city for the Aguafria Street Conway Intersection Safety Improvement Project in the amount of $55,000. What this amendment does is it provides the city with $55,000. It does not require a city match. The need for the additional money is to add lighting design as well as additional right-of-way services due to a required tweak of the roundabout design, which realigned it and necessitated the need to acquire additional right-of-way. The reason this is on discussion is we need, in order to accept this money, we need this signed before early September, I forget the exact date. So this was the last council meeting we can make it to. We went to Public Works Committee on Monday, we did not go to Finance, and now we are before you on discussion.
Thank you. There are other questions for John? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second? Is there a discussion? Could we call the roll, please?
Counsel Omerworth. Counsel Veale Copley.
Yes.
Counsel Viadiel.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Lindell. Counsel Rivetta.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. And John, before you leave, item number 13 also appears to have your name on it.
Yes. So this is amendment number two to another funding agreement between us and the DOT for the Guadalupe Street Improvement Project. The purpose of this is it provides a right-of-way funding, both for right-of-way mapping as well as acquisition, in the amount of $540,000. This requires no city match. And again, it has the same timelines as the, the previous items, so thus necessitating us to have to come to this council meeting on discussion.
Questions? Your motion?
Move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, I jumped the gun on Counsel Harris.
We talked about this Monday night at, at Public Works, so I have no real issue, but I'm just curious why there was no, because the previous awards required a city match 14.56%, it seemed to be the standard that was used. Why didn't this one require a match?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel Harris, that's a good question. The first design funding that we received was CMAC, congestion mitigation and air quality funding. And because of, I don't know if it's FHWA or DOT rules, that does require a match. This additional funding is highway safety improvement program funding. That does not require a match. The state actually provides the match.
Right.
To the federal funding.
Right. Okay. That answers my question. Thank you. Sorry to jump the gun. Is there, oh, yes, Counsel, Counsel Rivera, you have a question?
No, we already had a motion and a second.
I know, but I pulled the plug on it. Can we try that again? Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Is there a second? All right. Can we call the roll?
Counsel Veale Copley.
Yes.
Counsel Viadiel.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Ives.
Yes.
Counsel Lindell. Counsel Rivetta.
Yes.
Counsel Omerworth. Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, John. We are going to hear number 14 at a later date. Number 15 is an informational presentation, again, from Mr. Jones on the effort to assess the after-action review of the effluent episode. Mr. Jones, the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. If I could request the doc cam, please? So at the end of June and the beginning of July, there was an issue with compliance at the wastewater treatment plant, which ultimately led to the disruption of service of treated effluent to reuse customers. Upon getting the service restored, we did pull together a team and went through to develop an after-action report, which I've included in the packet. Through that process, a couple of things I would like to highlight, as you see on the screen, as a result, as a result to the water reclamation facility improvement plan. And speaking with the wastewater staff, I do feel that they have taken the right approaches, again, with, from their five-year master plan, maintaining their CIP, their execution rate of those projects. They're under construction with the anaerobic digesters now. That includes the installation of the SCADA, which is the supervisory control and data acquisition, computer network system that brings monitoring information into a centralized location for reporting and alerts and monitoring. They're working to finalize the design for the irrigation system upgrade design. I believe last Finance Committee, the wastewater did a presentation about, also trying to find ways to accelerate that process. They talked about some of the challenges of taking basins down during peak times of the season. Again, that's going to expand this SCADA system into the secondary treatment. And even with their, in the CIP, there are projects that were also discussed in finance, things like tertiary treatment, disinfection system. Ultimately, leading me back to that, I do feel that wastewater is very in tuned to the regulatory compliments, what their challenges are, and developing plans and executing strategies to address those issues. With that being said, though, I will conclude that as far as delivery of treated effluent and the incident that we, that we experienced, that it still doesn't guarantee 100% of that delivery. Bear with me, some technology. The second point I'd like to talk about is then, even in the plan, it talks now about integrated and sustainable delivery of the system. And I tried to pull out bullet points to talk about, how do you, how do you add resiliency to a delivery system? Early on, I know I've communicated to the governing body where I feel our water division sets a really good model for how you, how you do that. When you look at multiple ports of source, networking of your system, storage, multiple feed points. of source, networking of your system, storage, multiple feed points on how they, how they provide water service to the greater community. So as I take those same principles and apply them to, again, an integrated and sustainable delivery system, things that, that are under current consideration in works is, again, multiple sources of supply, finding more sources than there's just the reclaimed water, which may include and not be limited to things like aquifer storage and recovery or the Rio Grande as potential sources. In addition, system storage, I apologize, it may not be absolutely clear within the packet, but it does allude to a 2 million gallon water storage tank located at the facility. There's only one 2 million gallon water tank on the facility that is currently owned by Las Companas Co-op. So we've already been talking with them and engaged about, it's an asset that they're currently not using, asking them what their intent and what would it take for the city to take control of that asset, and how could we use that to integrate into our system to add some more resiliency? So that's where the storage at the water reclamation facility is identified. In addition, I think potential looks into storage within our reuse systems and our strategies, and also I think the potential to look at additional source, storage at, on the golf courses. The reason I add that in, I do have a little bit of experience coming from the Buckman Director version that does provide raw water to the Las Companas Golf Course now, which is why they don't use the asset at the water reclamation facility. And during my tenure at, at the Buckman Director version, there were similar challenges. There were times when the Buckman Director version did not divert, and therefore Las Companas would not receive water for their golf course or for use. So overall, from the startup to the duration, there were modifications, honestly, that Las Companas made where they increased the amount of storage on their golf course so that if the facility was down a week, a month, that they had additional storage that would help them, you know, kind of move past those challenges. So again, I think it's very similar in the situation. There were some approaches I think they took that we should at least evaluate as, are those, are there potential strategies we can incorporate? And then the last point where it talks about multiple feed points, really is more about integrating pumping infrastructure. And so in the packet, there's a couple of preliminary, preliminary looks at how you would tie pipelines together and how we would integrate that tank in, and really just give more flexibility. One of the challenges that we had, once the direction was given to provide an alternate source, for example, from a fire hydrant, there was also, there was challenges, and that's not something easily to do, right? It takes time and resources and the same amount to undo. And so I think there's integrations within the system that could be made that could kind of streamline, streamline some of that process. Even with that being said, I still would follow up that it still doesn't guarantee 100% of treated effluent delivery. Even though we're using, what I've explained is the model of the Water Division, so even though the Water Division has four sources of water supply, 32 million gallons of storage within the system, and pipes that run up and down almost every street and are connected at almost every intersection, there are times within the system that we do not deliver water, right? If there's a main break on your street, you do not have water. So even with that type of resiliency, I think what I'm emphasizing is it still doesn't get us to the 100%, but there are steps that we can take. And then the last point that I had... What I conclude with, kind of some next steps in addition to the after-action report and what we evaluated, that still shouldn't be lost through the discussion, is continue to look forward on what is sustainability through water conservation and what that means for reclaimed treated effluent. Again, following the lead of the Water Division and the Water Conservation Office that have really set the forefront of what they're doing, and I think there's lessons learned and approaches and strategies that should be considered. There are definitely system upgrades and design and construction. I did talk about some of the things that wastewater is, is doing to move forward. What I didn't talk about is I also feel that there are some system upgrades and design and construction that would actually occur on the re-user side, ultimately, right, things that we can do different, efficiencies that can be gained, and different approaches we can look at. And with that, of course, comes funding for those capital needs, and what do those mean, and what's the return on investment? And ultimately, looking at that cost of service and where, where these things end up residing. So with that, again, thank you for the opportunity to, to present the after-action report and for me to go over those bullets, and I am available to stand for questions.
Thank you very much. Counselor Ives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, and as always, compliments to the Water Company, the Wastewater Company, and all those folks who have significantly planned for the city's use and disposition of used water and its reuse throughout our city. It has kept us vital and vibrant. I wanted to note that it is a joy to hear you use the word "resiliency" so many times in speaking about your efforts there on all these systems. That has been a, a term which, over the past five years, has found firm footing in our language when it comes to our water system and our wastewater system and reclaimed wastewater. So no, I am particularly pleased that that is part of the rubric at this point in time. That last slide that you showed with regards to next step, which talks about construction, I presume that the reuse pipeline would fall within that category. And as you know from other meetings, I am certainly hopeful that there is an opportunity for the council to consider that before the end of this year, as certainly aware that you're doing additional analysis of the various options, but I guess I will be surprised if that option is bested by any other. And we have had probably, you know, a 10-month delay already, so it's something I hope to vote on before I leave this body. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I thought this, this whole exercise was extremely valuable. It's, it's really the first time I've seen it. I spent about an hour this morning with Mr. Jones, just kind of reviewing some of the details, so, and, and a reminder, I mean, much of what's embodied in here, we, we hear bits and pieces of, so Alan McGregor made a presentation to Finance. I asked him to kind of just, you know, circulate, you know, the timeline and other information related to the aeration project, which is part and parcel of some of the long-term developments that we're going to be employing to improve the situation. But, but for right now, you know, I think that, you know, increased monitoring through the SCADA system is one, one way that we can certainly be much more responsive. We get real-time information whenever we want it, and we're, we're going to be having that level of information, at least on the digester sometime in the next few months. As, and then at the aeration, we'll also get tied into that. So, I mean, we are working towards really being able to stay on top of a very dynamic biologic system that has a lot of variables to it. We talked also a lot about some of the issues and how this 2 million gallon tank can provide support, but, you know, I, I think everybody realizes, looking at the information that was provided, I think Marty Sanchez went through 2 million gallons in, you know, the number of days that they needed, it wasn't the full period. So that, that will help in some situations, and then the other improvements. But part of what I wanted to say, too, is that this exercise is extremely valuable, and it was really made even more valuable by bringing the Office of Emergency Management into it, in that fairly formal, not fairly, very formal format that David Silver employs if, kind of Department of Homeland Security. And so I would want to see that type of approach in the future for whether it's, you know, an instance such as this, related to our utility system or perhaps Public Works, but also as we develop this culture of safety that we've talked about, and now that we have a safety officer in place and on the job, and that's also, that's a, that's a regulatory environment in many ways, a compliance environment, and I would think that if we have incidents, that we would have an after-action summary and delivered in a fairly timely way, and that's the other thing about this, in less than two months, we have a very thorough document in front of us, and I'm sure people, other, a lot of people looked at the number of participants, the people who participated in the after-action summary that was organized by David Silver. So again, this is important for its own right, its own sake, but what I think is extremely important is that it sets, it's a model, it's a precedent for a number of situations similar to this, and also related to the development of our culture of safety. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Counselor. Other questions, comments? I would, I would re, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor Lindell.
Thank you, Mayor. In the packet, on page 34, attachment D1, could you speak to that, please?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Lindell, if you will bear with me one second.
Sure.
I'm sorry, that was, you said attachment?
D1, D as in David.
Counselor Lindell, attachment D is looking at the extension of a, of a potable water system. So currently, coming down the Calle de Rio corridor is a Buckman Director version transmission line, they refer to as the 5A pipeline. When that pipeline was installed as a transmission line, transmission meaning it's going to convey large amounts of water, distribution is what goes through the streets and to the home. So this was identified as a transmission line, but knowing about growth and development, there were strategic stubouts that were placed on this line for the future growth of distribution throughout that area. One of those stubouts actually happens to be right in their driveway of the Marty Sanchez Golf Course. So I did have our, our water team take a look at, if that were to be extended, what would that, just a preliminary look of what would that look like and what was the ballpark cost? And so on the drawing for attachment D, that is the Calle de Rio, and it's showing the existing stubout, they would install a master meter and a pressure regulating valve, backpool preventer. They would extend it down to a point that they connect on to the Marty Sanchez current water system, which is fed off of a, of a groundwater well, and would install a fire hydrant, which would also give fire protection. There would also be a stubout that would allow for future connections in that area, because again, the intent of the stubout was for a more elaborate distribution system, and so allowing for that continued future growth was also incorporated. The, the intent, if you look at the price breakdown, one of the major costs is, of course, is the actual vault and apparatuses for metering and backpool prevention, at about half the cost, just to be able to meter that. In addition, I think a couple of benefits that it would do is, is again, going back to, in the event that we would put potable water, city of Santa Fe, from the Buckman Director version, potable water on that site, it would give them some fire protection in the area, and in addition, it would allow the groundwater wells to, to be abandoned and put them onto a system. And, and that is the evaluation. I, I hope I explained that well and maybe answered the question?
Yeah, for anybody that doesn't have the packet in front of them, the cost on that is $715,000. Going a little further into the packet, on page 42, this is an, an agreement, a draft agreement to supply treated effluent to the entire municipal recreation complex. I'm assuming that includes the golf course.
Counselor Lindell, that is correct. This was a draft agreement, very similar to the agreements that we have with our other reuse customers. This was implemented, I'm going to say probably three or four years ago when we drafted this. Even looking at the draft that I'd had, you can even tell by the names that it is dated. But as we looked at the delivery of treated effluent at the time, working with the Parks and Recs Department, there are a couple of challenges that utilities has with delivering the treated effluent. One is that there's not an agreement that identifies what's the, what's the quantity of water, how much can they take in a day, how much can they take over the course of the month? So there's really not those guidelines. I think that the MRC, they do a, a good job of, of working with my staff on providing the meter reads, making sure meters are calibrated, but they do that not because of a written agreement, right? It's just through relationships with Parks and Recs Department. And in addition, currently on the wastewater division's discharge permit, 289, which allows them to use the treated effluent, the Marty, the MRC, that whole complex, is currently written onto wastewater's permit. So another thing this agreement was, was intended to do, and it did, was it also took the Parks and Rec Department on a path to actually get their own discharge permit from the New Mexico Environmental Department. That application has been submitted, I want to say probably sometime last year, and it's waiting for review of the Groundwater Bureau. But we do expect that the MRC will get their own discharge permit, which does have, honestly, some advantages for the utility. So currently, because they are on the utility's discharge permit, wastewater carries the liability for all the conditions of that permit. One that we highlighted through this was, in the event of an exceedance, the contingency plan is you turn it off, and wastewater wastes no time or haste and turning it off to comply with the permit. But in addition, there's other, there's other contingents, contingencies, other restraints within that permit that our reusers have to follow. Has to do with the directory of sprinklers, right, low-profile sprinklers, signage, right, signs have to be up that says this turf is irrigated with reclaimed treated effluent. The reason those things exist is because they're in the permit. By having the liability on wastewater, there was an intent that, once a week, once a month, wastewater staff would need to go to Swan Park or to Marty Sanchez Golf Course to make sure signs were in place and legible, that they weren't fading, that there wasn't overspray, that there wasn't ponding, all the conditions of the permit. And that honestly was a point of contention for me, and my desire was, this is the last reuse customer on our permit, that I would like to see them on their own permit. And that was a lot of discussion around other benefits, I think, to Parks and Rec. As a reuse customer, there is other liabilities that they carry. Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Department currently own the pump station and the pipeline that comes from the waste, the water reclamation facility to their, to their facilities. There are challenges with being an underground facility owner, from line locates to waterline repairs. Right now, that is, that is their equipment, and the onus is on them to do that, and there are challenges, and there were growing pains that we were going through at the time with getting locates in timing manner, and contractors getting the PRC involved when those tickets aren't executed. Multiple times, right, we have, again, worked with Parks and Rec staff. I personally have gone out to locate sites and worked with contractors to get these lines located, but still not definitely clear. And so again, the intent at the time was to get them on their own permit and to get an agreement in place that really just determined what are the, what are the rules and engagement? And, and so that's why that was drafted.
What's the current compensation level?
The current compensation level is a good working relationship. So right now, there is no funds, and there's no charge to the MRC for delivery of treated effluent.
I just will bring it up that in this draft on compensation, with some quick math on it, that would, that would be at a cost of almost $750,000 a year to the MRC, and I just think that it's a number that we need to know and that we need to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Jones? Yes, Counselor Rivera?
Just one. Mr. Jones, you mentioned some of the bigger users of treated effluent. The only one that's not mentioned is the racetrack. So just how did they compensate for the lack of water? What were their plans?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Rivera, during this particular incident, we were in communication with, with the owners of, of that turf, and so they did not receive service during that time. I can only make assumptions on why, you know, whether it's differences of grass or kind of where they were on the irrigation schedule, but it just, it didn't elevate to the issue of, that we dealt with on the two golf courses.
So did they just not water, or?
That is, that is correct. So none of the reuse customers had any water, on the ones... On the ones we had mentioned, honestly, were the ones that we were dealing with that had immediate needs, such as the contractors, that we talked about diverting it to Santa Fe County's field station, and then the work that we did with the MRC and the Santa Fe Country Club. We were in communication with the other reusers, but there was, it didn't elevate to a need that we, honestly, that we had to react or do anything different.
That's interesting, because in the, in the time that we had this, the, you could see the differences at the country club and at the MRC. And I'm not sure why the Downs End didn't need some, some form of watering in that, in that same timeframe. So it'd be interesting to know if it's the type of grass they use or, or what their secret is, because that would have been nice to have. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions? I would just concur with Counselor Harris's thoughts about this after-action review. I think it's really an excellent piece of work. I think it's a timely piece of work. And I think we continue, in this government across the board, to be willing to do a self-assessment and come back with corrective action plans when we do it, whether it's about the ERP system and the IV and V, or in this case, the treated effluent issue. So it does set a very good precedent for how we look at ourselves, assess our performance, answer hard questions, and give very honest answers. So I appreciate that, and thank you very much for being here tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Rivera.
I just thought of something that-
Cut you off, I'm sorry.
I couldn't find in the packet. And I, I appreciate this report, it was very detailed and helpful. I was just curious in terms of the communication, and, and it discusses how communication needs to be improved. So how does that relate, then, to our communication pathway that relates to other jurisdictions, specifically in this case, the county? And I know there were some concerns with farmers along La Cieneguita area, and so I'm curious, what did we learn from that piece? And I never really heard the resolution on that as well. So could you elaborate?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Rivera. In the table, we talked about communication, I believe, is actually was its, kind of had its own section of assessment that was reviewed. I believe a couple of takeaways. One, so with the reuse customers, right, the contractors, the people that, that we work with, we do have their contact information, and that is, that is communicated. But what we did talk about was, is expanding that communication to include things like the, the Office of Public Information. So then we're not just talking to the contractors, but we're, we're also talking to the media, to our media outlet, that we talk through. So there was a point of communication, I think ultimately through this process, we kind of talked about that, you can see the start date and the completion date is kind of ongoing. I think some of the lessons learned is, is kind of what we tried to identify. So a lot of discussion came around to messaging, right? It's saying the right thing at the right time for it to be effectively communicated, and then what do people hear? So a lot of the conversations were around, what are the things we did that were not well? Not well received, not well communicated, miscommunicated. And it actually took us going through this whole event, about probably four days of communication back and forth, to really start to kind of fine tune the language on how people, how people who maybe aren't on the wastewater technical side, on what it is they hear and what that means to them. So the reason it's ongoing is I feel we did gain some ground, kind of those lessons learned and knocks on the head on things we were saying. And so formalizing that as a building block, but I wouldn't say that it's done and that's why it's ongoing. We communicated and evolved as we had to in the situation, but that's, it's a great time to learn stuff, but it's not the opportune time to learn stuff.
Right.
So again, that is still ongoing, we're still working with, with Lilith Chacon on, again, how is it we're communicating, what is it I'm trying to communicate to you and what is it that you hear?
Right. Yeah, I understand that. I, I guess I see the pathway of communication, not just PIO to inform media sources, but that we, and, and you had mentioned contractors, well, that's one line, that's one aspect of it. But then I think about stakeholders that aren't on our list of calling, and those are stakeholders that are downstream. Even if they're not our contractors, they should be notified just to let them know, hey, we're, we're working on this, we've, just to know that we're actually on top of it, because I think we were on top of it. I just feel like it didn't get communicated to some of the stakeholders. And so I'd like to see that more, especially when it's cross-jurisdictional issues or, and our partners, I just want to make sure that line of communication is there. And other than that, I just appreciate the work you all did and this report, and it would be nice to see more like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, many thank yous, many thanks, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Matters from the city manager.
Mayor, councilors, a couple matters from me tonight. First is a little update on ERP. This evening, you'll get a written version of this, which goes a little bit more in-depth, just to keep you all informed on what's been happening. So I know we've been getting questions, I'd imagine you all have been getting questions about how well Munis ERP is working, and if vendors are getting paid. And the answer to both of those is yes. ERP is working, vendors are getting paid, city is doing business as predicted. There have been hiccups, which I'll talk about a little bit in a second, but just to give a perspective on how much has happened since going live, 754 invoices, POs have been cut for almost $9 million, 507 contracts have been issued, 117 training sessions for 100, or 1,006 attendees have been done, and of course, permits are being processed through the Land Use Department, so things are actually happening. Keep in mind, as a perspective, we transitioned from a, from a pretty much strictly based paper, or paper-based system, to something that's much more part of the information age, more or less overnight, although the preparation has been happening for a couple of years, the, the trigger really gets pulled on an overnight basis. So as I said at the beginning, and have said multiple times over the last year and a half and months, we're going to have hiccups. It's, it's part of, part of transitioning to a software system that is this significant. Some of the hiccups we've had have been software-based, that's important to, to separate out a little bit, because you have to know that Tyler is a cloud-based system, which means that the data is hosted on their servers, and we have outages on their servers, we're actually dependent on their services to fix those. It is also important to know, when those outages happen, it is something that we have to process, reclaim, whatever non-service funds are available to us. They have a contract to provide the services, and essentially, when they're not, there's a way to get part of that back. But we are dependent on them as the servers. Some of the hiccups are also process-based, and we're working to fix those processes. Plain and simply, despite all of the training and change management and transition-oriented things we've done, some of them are, are simply people-oriented, and we're, of course, working on those as well. As I said, since Go Live, we've done 117 training sessions for over 1,000 attendees. So we've trained and trained and trained, and we'll continue to train. What this is getting us is the city as a whole and as a governmental organization into a place that's a lot more professional and accountable and ultimately efficient than I think we have been in the past. The team is working very hard to not only fix these bugs, identify them, correct them, and make our systems better, but to hold the vendor accountable as well. It's something they do every day. I still say that we should all be very proud of this effort. It is going to have a positive end result, it's already having a positive end result. As I said at the beginning, I'm sure you all hear from the vendors who aren't getting paid right, and the best thing I can say is, when you tell us about those, it not only allows us to fix them quickly, but then we can figure out what's causing that bug and fix that bug for the future as well. So the more that you can forward those issues, as you hear them, to the, to the ERP Munis team, the, the better we'll be, and the better we'll be, quicker we'll, we'll get those fixed, and the better we'll be in the long run. That's, that's part of the transition. Second item to talk about, you might or might not hear about this, I know people are very sensitive about their clothing and their uniforms, so I'm going to say it, just so you've heard, we have changed this year how we do uniforms. In the past, we used to allot a certain amount of money to, to an AFSCME member, and actually it goes to all three union members, this only applies to AFSCME. And non-union, right now, we used to allocate a certain amount of money, and they'd go through a PO process to buy their uniforms. Through an IRS audit, we realized that was not a good way to do things, we, because of IRS suggestions, IRS suggestions, we have made modifications to our system. AFSCME has agreed to this, so the union is on board, will now issue that same amount of money to the employee, and it'll be their responsibility to buy the uniforms and be in compliance with the uniform policy, just like they were in the past. But they won't go through a PO system, it's, it'll be a single check that's cut to them. As with any change, I'd imagine some people get uncomfortable with this. The reason I tell you is just so you're aware of it. If there's any questions, you can call me, you can call our finance or HR staff, and we can explain it further. The last thing to bring up is, not that I have to remind you, but Zobra is Friday. I would imagine, because I heard from the fire chief, that he was putting passes to the fire station in your boxes, I'd imagine you have seen them. If you haven't, by all means, contact me or Chief Babcock, because the invitation was made for you all to join the fire and police families at Fire Station One as usual. It is a good, pleasant place to, to experience Zobra, if you don't feel like being in what can be the madness, and you also get to hang out with police and fire families, which is pretty cool. Mayor, councilors, that's it for my updates.
Thank you, Mr. City Managers. Is there anything from the city attorney?
Yes, Mayor Weber, members of the council. Should the council wish to go into executive session, I would recommend we do so to discuss participation in pending litigation, in particular, participating along with other local governments and in AMIC, in the case of City and County of San Francisco versus U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services in the Northern District of California.
Counselor Rivera, is there a motion?
Sure, Mayor. I move that we enter an executive session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 10-15-1H, Subpart 7, for discussion of threat and/or pending litigation in which the governing body is or may become a participant.
Second. All the roll.
Counselor Ariel.
Yes.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Ives.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor O'Meara.
Yes.
Counselor Helcopter.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. We will move to executive session. We will move to executive session.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, it's not bad because it's, it's short chapters for each. It's an easy read.
Big letters.
Yeah, that's a big one of those. Big picture books. Picture books. The one that you pull out like that and the guy moves.
Councilor Rivera, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 10-15-1J, I move that the governing body reconvene in open session and state for the record that the matters discussed in the closed session were limited to those specified in the motion for closure.
Second, please call the roll.
Councilor Harris. Councilor Ives.
Yes.
Councilor Lindell. Councilor Rivera.
Yes.
Councilor O'Meara Worth. Councilor Vialcopter. Councilor Beeta.
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal, coming out of the executive, thank you. Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you, motion is approved.
All right, we're back. Is there, we're up to item 18. Do we have a motion on item 18?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Yes, Councilor Ives.
Yes.
Councilor Lindell.
Yes.
Councilor Rivera.
Yes.
Councilor O'Meara Worth. Councilor Vialcopter. Councilor Villarreal.
Yes.
Councilor Beeta.
Yes.
Councilor Harris. Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Yes.
Brings us to item 19 on the agenda. There are there matters from the city clerk that you wish to bring to our attention?
Yes, sir, thank you. On Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, September 3rd at 4 o'clock here in the chambers, we'll have our special Fiesta presentation. So that's at 4 o'clock on Tuesday. And that's where the Fiesta royalty will come to meet everybody, serenade us and all that fun stuff. Then I also want to announce that on September 25th, we will be having our District Two Off-Site Council on Your Corner meeting. And that'll be at the Santa Fe Public Schools Educational Services Center, 610 Alta Vista Street, also known as the Boardroom for the School Board.
Correct, thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Communications from the governing body. Let me start to my left, Councilwoman Vialcopter.
Mr. Mayor, I was invited last Saturday to present awards for the winners of the triathlon. And I saw John Munoz here earlier. I'm not sure if he's still here, but I would like to thank John, the Parks and Recreation Department Director, and Liz Royball, the, I think she's a chief cook and bottle washer for Parks and Rec, and all of their staff, and an incredible amount of volunteers. And I just think it was a fabulous event. It's not the first one the city has organized. The city has been doing this for many, many, many years, although they didn't do it last year. But there's a great amount of detail involved. The Santa Fe Police Department also was helpful in traffic routing and such. And it's just a wonderful event for the community. Many of my constituents called me and were very much encouraging the city to do this. And there, there's just an incredible amount of positive energy and some of the most healthy people around, which I can admire. And I will say that there was one race that involved a winner in the male category that I announced as rigged, because our own city manager won. And I think he deserves a good round of applause. And Christine Mahelcik, Mahelcik also won. I don't remember the category, third, category, third place. So, and the mayor was also there. And so anyway, just kudos to everyone who was there. We drank a lot of water, ate a lot of strawberries, took a lot of photos, and it was a fantastic morning. So, thanks to Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Abeta, thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be introducing an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Santa Fe, New Mexico General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2019 in a maximum principal amount not to exceed $6,400,000. And again, the purpose is for refunding bonds. And so I won't read the entire title, but look forward to introducing this because it will save the city money.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilor Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to wish everyone a safe and happy ZOBRAS well as fiestas before our next meeting. And then it's birthday time again, man, I just can't sit.
Oh, it is.
My mother's birthday is September 7th, so happy birthday to my mother. And my daughter is September 10th, my oldest daughter, so happy birthday to her as well. So, it happens when you have a big family, you have birthdays all the time.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilwoman Villarreal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce a resolution supporting the protection of wildlife corridors in the Upper Rio Grande Basin. And I too would like to wish everyone a safe and fun ZOBRAS and Fiesta celebrations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. I will introduce a resolution supporting proposals to boost the efficiency requirements in the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code by at least 10%. And I would join in the measure that Councilor Abeta has just introduced, as well as the measure that Councilor Villarreal has just introduced, sorry. My elbows are.
Siri would also like to co-sponsor.
Elbows are too pointed. And then I will join in the measure yet to be introduced by Councilor Carol Romero-Worth. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to introduce a resolution adopting the rules and regulations for the Santa Fe Regional Airport. By way of explanation, you know, we're required, the TSA requires us to have an airport security program. These rules and regulations come out of that, so they're fairly dense. But David Silver, this is one of the things he pushed through before he's left it. So, and I also would like to request an update. I've got on my calendar that we're going to receive, most likely we would receive a copy of our, our library study that we've contracted for in August. I haven't heard that it's impending, but I hope the city manager can report that we're going to see it in the very near future, sometime in September, in other words.
Thank you. Councilor Mayor Worth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am introducing a resolution authorizing the implementation of the Low Income Financial Equality Parking Program. Be referring to it as LIFE, to offer low-income families the opportunity to pay their outstanding unpaid parking citations at a reduced amount. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to join with Councilor Abeta on the refunding of the bonds. We're not refunding them, we're refunding them. And again, salute our Finance Department team for finding yet another opportunity to save the city money. I think it's half a million dollars that they've used their knowledge and skills to bring to the city as a saving. So I'm happy to work with Councilor Abeta, who has sponsored that. And I would remind everybody that ZOBRAS this year is a litter-free event. Treat it as if you were going into a national park. What you take in, you bring out. And make sure that you are all, we are all safe and taking care of each other and making sure that it's a fun event with everybody being on their best behavior and looking after everybody else's safety and well-being. And same goes for fiestas. I think it's going to be another good celebration this year. So thank you for, everybody for pitching in to make that happen. With that, let us pivot to our evening session. We're about five minutes late. And we should begin with petitions from the floor. So if there's something you wish to speak about that is not on any of the public hearings, if it is not on the public hearing, we'll give you two minutes to speak to the governing body and the city clerk will be the official timekeeper. And then we will move on to the actual public hearing. So, two minutes if you need to speak to the governing body. Hit the on button, though. That's the ticket.
Hello?
Yep, you're good.
Mayor, councilors. I had the pleasure of sitting next to the mayor the other day at the.
Need your name.
Eric Gent. Having a nice conversation, never spoke with you before. It was very pleasant, thank you very much. During that conversation, I became aware, in fact, you told me that I was really out of the loop of city, of city government and process, so I thought I'd come and say hello. My name's Eric Gent. My wife and I have a place called the Reillyard Performance Center. We've been doing music and dance on the Reillyard since 1992. And we offer and encourage accepting and egalitarian space. You can identify as who you want, you can worship who you want. We try to be as, as welcoming as possible. We're not an international destination, tourist destination. We're not a giant financial engine in this city, but we offer people places to get together and share the expression of music and dance, very human experience. I appreciate, I've always appreciated the work that you all folks, that all you folks do, elected officials. And if you get a chance, come and check out what we're doing. Saturday mornings during Farmer's Market is our big day, capoeira at 9 o'clock, children's dance class at 10, my wife's African dance class at 11:30. So thank you very much for this opportunity and nice to get to know you a little bit.
Thank you for coming, I appreciate it. Come back again. Next, who's up next?
Good evening. My name is Christine Fredenberg.
Christine, you might want to pull that mic down a little bit closer. There you go.
Is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I am here to talk about the Midtown Link Overlay Project. On the corner of St. Michael's and Pacheco.
That's actually a public hearing that will be appearing later, so this is not the time for that to be spoken to.
It will be later tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
It's not? The hearing was closed, but we're not having new testimony on it during public.
Mayor.
That's what I'm saying. Yes, ma'am.
So it's not, I believe she has a petition that she has put together that she wanted the governing body to know about.
Yeah, here's the problem, we have a.
Mayor Weber, I don't think we actually did close it, particularly since Council Ives wasn't here, so we could give him the opportunity to ask any questions if he had any.
When we resume that item, would be the appropriate time for somebody to speak to it, not during matters from.
Yes.
I think the minutes reflected that the public hearing was closed.
Well, we can. Hang on a second, ma'am, don't leave yet. We're working this out.
But we could also reopen the public hearing, correct? Mayor Weber, Councilor Romero-Worth, that's correct.
So, the, my point was not that you can't speak, but not at this time. And we're going to be taking the matter up that I think you wish to address a little bit later this evening, if you want to stick around. But if we let you speak to it during petitions in the, from the floor, it's not the right time slot for your. Gotcha. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Sorry for my confusion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Remember, if, if there is an item on the agenda later that it's a public hearing, this is not petitions from the floor. Who else wished to speak to us this evening? Yes?
I'm Pat Walkie. I'm here, I'm with Wanza Forest and Santa Fe Forest Coalition. I'm here to speak for the trees. I ran across an article the other day that I just wanted to share with the city council. I read on another state's forest website that how powerful the use of words can be in shaping public opinion. The article is called "The Three Rs: Resilience, Restoration, and Regeneration." It's about the National Forests, the National Forest Service changing their sales pitch to the public about the reasons for cutting and burning our forests. These terms have done much to mollify a public that increasingly were opposing the ecological and economic losses happening to national forests. You may note that our very own Santa Fe National Forest. You may note that our very own Santa Fe National Forest Plant has prettied up their project name to Landscape Resiliency Project. There is one R word. Restoration sounds like a reassuring term. However, the term became the first of many buzzwords of the last two decades that has been frequently misused to justify more of the same O, subsidized logging. The National Forest in Tennessee did a project known as the Brawley Restoration Project. The project has gone on for over a decade with no success. Indeed, there are hundreds of acres of burn cut over briars and copper stumps. This is one of many projects that have helped degrade further a landscape that's in serious need of healing. The third R, resiliency, is appearing more in agency literature as well. It appears in conjunction with the agency's stated goals for addressing the effects of climate change. The use of these terms looms large and trumps current proposed rule with measures to exclude the public based on the ecocism, restoration, and resilience activities, essentially claiming that any use of these terms is a justifiable goal in itself. I ask that you, our city government, take a more critical look at what the Forest Service is really saying and doing in Santa Fe's backyard.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. We can leave that and we'll distribute it. We'll distribute it to the council. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for letting us speak, our opinions. And I believe all of you. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Emmy Capone.
Pardon me one minute. We have a, somebody just fell down. Could you hold on a minute, please? You OK? OK. We had a little accident.
Oh, I'm sorry.
OK, as long as everybody's OK.
... aside from the topics we're bringing up. My name is Emmy Capone. I live 1212 McLovius Street, 87505. And I believe all of you have received an invitation to an event happening tomorrow at 7:00. Dominique DeSala will be speaking, and it is important to listen to different sides from what we hear with the catastrophic fires. And that has been my approach several times speaking. But I did watch Greta Thunberg again today, who's just landed in New York. And our climate crisis is more serious than ever, so to believe that the trees in the forests are dying is totally acceptable because we're all under stress. Of course, the trees are under stress and the bark beetles and the pine, the spruce borer, whatever it's called, only attack trees that are weakened. And I believe in dead trees. I mean, I think they have an incredible value in life. I forget if it's seven-eighth percent of our insects live in dead wood. And we're losing so much in our planet that it's just a little tag along to please come to this talk. I doubt who will touch on these things, but I'm very afraid of the mid-September watershed burn that's up and coming. And you do have to understand that these burns are reoccurring. First, they thin, and then every six to 10 years, they will be burning again and again and again. And I love to ride my bike, you know? I love to be outside, and I don't like breathing toxic air. And even some of the forest people have said, we're trying to lessen these chemicals that we use and have them be not so toxic. But my God, why do you have to do that? So I'll leave it to the lecture. And I do hope you can make it tomorrow night. It would be greatly appreciated to see some of you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Stephanie Benanatopia, Box 1601. Thank you for bringing up recreation and triathlons. But again, I wonder why it takes two and a half days to set up vendor booths around Fort Marcy so that it was closed today at 11:30. You all have gotten my emails, although you have not acknowledged my read receipt. But I hope you have gotten my emails about the closures at Fort Marcy and the lack of work at Salvador Perez. And again, that building sat there empty for over seven months, nothing happening. And we're supposed to wait till the end of February. Meanwhile, we're going to close Fort Marcy. So again, we will have one pool for 80,000 people. We're even closing the outdoor pool this weekend, which has never happened again. So again, thanks for another first. And in terms of public records, I've been asking for certain public records. I asked for the contract for Fuego. Now, I know amici briefs can be important, but I think that the city attorney should be able to find the contract with Fuego and produce it and also show what Fuego has given to the city in terms of helping maintain Major's Field, which was part of that contract. I've also asked for the directive that signage ordinances are not to be enforced. I get part of what I asked for. I don't get the whole thing. The same for certain plans. Oh, you got everything? I look, no plans, no amended permits are there. Again, it's ridiculous. Your constituent services, I've had numbered complaints for over three months, or excuse me, two months now, that there's no action on. And again, if that's the access the citizens have, that they can feel heard, I can tell you that I do not feel heard there. And land use, too, is contradictory. There's contact with the Catholic Church. No response on that. Where is the contact? What was the contact? Who contacted? And meanwhile, all I get from Carol Johnson is it was illegal for them to put it on the public property. Then why did it take, why did the city refuse to enforce that ordinance then? And that is a question. And why we cannot trust land use.
Thank you.
To enforce ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Sam Hitt, and I live at 48 Old Gal Stay Way. I'm president of the Santa Fe Forest Coalition. And yes, I would like to invite you to a talk tomorrow night. Dr. De La Sala is an internationally recognized forest ecologist who has some very important things to say, and I've sent you all emails with the details of where and when. Some of the topics he's going to cover are, an important one for the city, is the risk of wildfire. Currently, each year, the treated areas that are cleared of vegetation are encountered by, encounter the wildfire that they're, let's see, designed to control about 1% of the time. So it's a very low percentage, obviously. However, in contrast, if a homeowner reduces the fuel around his home and takes some fire wise measures, there's a 95% chance that his home will survive, even the most intense wildfires. The other important thing, I think, that Dr. De La Sala is going to bring up is the new understanding about the importance of the post-fire environment. So current research shows that the post-fire environment, like we've had in our big fires in the Hamas, for example, is the second-most biologically diverse forest type in the Southwest. So I was just up in the Hamas today in the site of 2011 Les Conches burn. It is extraordinary, the level of aspens that are coming up there, and they're growing several feet a year. In years to come, the tourists that come to Santa Fe to look at our beautiful aspens are going to be going to the Hamas at the site of those big burns. So there's lots of benefits. I hope you all can make it tomorrow, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
I'm OK. My name is Barbara Fix. I live at 610 Alicia. I'm speaking in favor of the resiliency plan of the forest. What they're trying to do is restore the fire regime that existed until the 1880s, try to create a patchwork in the forest, which was before the coming of massive grazing with railroads, which changed the whole ecology of the forest. It's a gradual process. The thinning and the burning is an essential part of that. The fear for us is for our watershed, which in good years provides about 40% of the water. Yes, prescribed burns, nobody likes the smoke, but can you imagine what it's going to be like if nothing is done and you have a dense forest that catches fire, you have a canopy fire like Les Conches? And the effect will be devastating for this whole city and region. In fact, is there an evacuation plan for that? The bothersome, were given notice of the smoke, people who have problems with it unfortunately can, you know, have to cope with it. But our entire city would be devastated. Our economy would be ruined if that fire happened. I truly believe that the people who are opposed to prescribed burning and thinning have good hearts, and they mean well. But it's important to go back to the facts and look at what the scientists are saying, not just pick and choose, well, the aspen forests have come back. Of course, they come back. They're transitional from fires. Our beautiful aspen forests up in the mountains, those are from the 1880s. There's a natural succession of trees. Fire that's kept low to the ground, which was the whole point of prescribed burns, does not harm us the way a massive catastrophic canopy fire would. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to speak. Anyone else who wishes to be heard on a matter that is not a public hearing, on something that you want to draw to our attention? If not, we have no appointments tonight, and we will move on to H1. Counselors Villarreal and Vihil Koppler have put this on the agenda. Bradley, do you want to introduce this item?
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. The ordinance before you is to, for the parking division, they are going to be installing in three of our parking garages, new automated parking systems. The great thing about these new parking systems, that they have three great things about them. They improve revenue, they reduce costs, and they improve the user's experience. This loan, we've worked out with New Mexico Finance Authority. We've got very attractive rates below 2% for the eight-year period. It's $1,575,000, and it'll be paid over in eight years.
Counselor Vihil Koppler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope my colleagues will support this measure because not only to ditto what Mr. Bradley, because I can't ever pronounce your last name, has said, but I think the user experience is really important here. For many committee meetings, some of you all have heard me complain about the problems that people have been having with our parking lots and how they work and how they haven't worked. And I think this is going to be a tremendous good thing for the user experience. And of course, if we can get money in our coffers for it, all the better. It's a long time coming, and I think it's good that we become more modernized wherever we go. And this is a good example, and working with the New Mexico Finance Authority, which is a wonderful organization, is good for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Villarreal, you wish to speak to this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to reiterate the importance of this, especially this weekend hearing that we had some more problems in the parking garage. And partly in due, or due to the fact that we don't have these modern systems that get people through our garages in a safe and efficient manner. So I'm for this alone for that reason and for the ones that just have been stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, well, I was going to go to the public, but Counselor Ives, why don't you?
I'm simply going to join as a co-sponsor.
OK. Mr. Counselor Ives wished to join as a co-sponsor. This is a public hearing. Are those, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this matter? Two minutes, please.
Stephanie Benanatopia, Box 1601. I just hope that this new technology actually works and doesn't break down, because that's always my fear, is that as things get more sophisticated, they're more likely to break down, and then people will really be pissed off because we have spent money for something that doesn't actually work. And I guess, I would like to hear that the projected revenues are going to offset the cost of this equipment, or how much more it will offset the cost of the equipment by these savings that are supposedly going to be generated by the use of the equipment. And then the other thing I just want to point out is that at one point at a city council meeting, we were told that to encourage people to come downtown, that they would not be ticketed after 5:00 at the meters. And the meters actually never got changed. They still say 6:00. And just a couple of weeks ago, I was talking to somebody, somebody was starting to put money in the meter. It was like 5:15. And I'm like, hey, you know, you don't have to do that. It's after 5:00. And he said to me, oh, yeah, I do, because I got a ticket at 5:30 just very recently. And there's one code enforcement person goes home at 5:30, and apparently on their way home, they ticket people. So maybe they didn't get the memo that 5:00 was the new deadline. So I thought that should get passed on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Excuse me, maybe change the meter signs, just cross them out or do something.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this matter? Comments from the council? This is time to discuss the item or make a motion. Yeah, there you go.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Could you call a roll, please?
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Koppler?
Yes.
Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Mayor Weber? Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved.
Thank you. Oh, I am being, good suggestion by my colleague to my left, which is that if anybody is here with the expectation that we will be taking up item H4, which is a case involving GeoPark, that item has been withdrawn from the agenda. So please forgive me for not having told you that sooner. If you're here for that item, it is not going to be heard tonight. Good call. Now, we will go back to the regular order of business, and that is item H2, which was sponsored by Counselor Harris. Do you want to say anything, or should we go to Ms. McCoy?
Mayor, members of the council, the item before you tonight amends the ordinance, so the proceeds received from the sale or lease of Santa Fe Estates are subject to appropriation by this body.
OK. Questions for the, for Mary McCoy before we go to a public hearing? Let's have some, all right, if there are comments from the public, this is the time to be heard on this item. Please come forward and address it now. OK. From the council. Question, Counselor Lindell.
Thank you. Do we have any way of addressing what the expected revenues are?
Mayor, Counselor Lindell, at this time, there is no fiscal impact listed on the fiscal impact report because the forthcoming revenues from the sale or lease are unknown.
So we don't actually have an estimate. We're just trying to change the fund to which the revenues would apply.
Change the mechanism on how the revenues would be appropriated.
OK. Thank you for the clarification.
I don't know if you would know the answer to this. Maybe it would be the sponsor. Why bring this forward now?
Well, this is a transaction that's been developing for a while, is my understanding. The city's been approached by Santa Fe Estates. The transaction is not complete, but given the seriousness of the, you know, need for revenue to support the Midtown property, it seemed appropriate to be ready. revenue to support the Midtown property, it seemed appropriate to be ready for any transaction that may occur.
If I can—maybe I can also pitch in on this. I think, you know, we have—and Mary, Fix, please correct me when I stray from facts here. I think one of the things that we've discovered over the last year and a half is that we have an awful lot of historical funds and special funds and special pockets and special agreements about where money will be funneled, and we're dealing with a need for simplifying, streamlining, and making more transparent the flow of funds into areas where the governing body can allocate those to need rather than to a pre-prescribed fund. So we're trying to take—before we make—before the sale happens, before the funds arrive in the city's coffers, we would like to clarify our flexibility to have that money flow in and out in ways that are much more conducive to our having flexibility to use them. Is that clarified at all? OK. Counselor Ives?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These funds would only be generated, not when the city receives this property back, but when the city sells some of this property. Is that correct?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Ives, that is correct.
And my sense, at least my recollection of how long this proposed conveyance back into the city has been going on is at least probably four to five years. Is that roughly correct, to your knowledge?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Ives, I am not aware of the—how long it goes back. Perhaps our other staff could speak to that.
Mayor Weber, Counselor Ives, I know we were approached at least in 2017. I'm not sure if it also preceded that date or not. I've seen drafts of the transaction going back that far.
Yeah, I believe there were discussions well in advance of any circulation of drafts. You know, I must admit, I think economic development is a significant function within the city, that it's appropriate to fund, and that we've used these types of land sales for many years to fund the economic development. And while I appreciate the general statement to increase funding coming into the general fund, I hate to see any loss of funding to economic development, which this could potentially be, especially because economic development can include such topics as affordable housing or housing across our city. So I'm afraid I am not in favor of the change, at least not at this point in time, given we don't know when we're getting the property back, much less when we might be turning around and selling any of it. We have no idea of the revenues. So, yeah, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Other—yes, Counselor Rivera?
Mary, would the—so you said the money would go back into the general fund. I assume a special account would be set up to hold the money?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Rivera, at this point, the language indicates that it is subject to appropriation by the governing body. So where that would be deposited will be subject to a—we would bring that decision forward, that proposal forward to the governing body to decide at the time when we do receive the revenue.
So the decision would have to be made, then, when the decision is made to sell a property, or we know how much we're going to receive from it?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Rivera, that is correct.
All right, and so I guess how—at that point, would then other departments or other areas that receive general fund monies that have needs be able to make a request for that?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Rivera, that would be—that is correct.
All right, and if there were no immediate needs in the city, then I assume that would go into some holding account?
I would—Mayor Weber, Counselor Rivera, I would recommend that we would accept it into the general fund and hold it in reserve. At this point, the city has mandated that we have a 10% general fund reserve. We can exceed that 10%, however, and that could be held in reserve until further appropriation, until a decision is made by this body on how to spend the money that is received from the sale or the lease of Santa Fe Estates.
Right. OK. That's all I had, Mayor.
I don't—we may have a disagreement, but I think it's a disagreement about the philosophy of budgeting. In my experience, the more you don't have dedicated funds, the more flexibility the any governing body or any elected body, whether it's the legislature or the Congress, in allocating and creating a budget, the fewer dedicated funds you have, the more flexibility and opportunity you have to use the revenues that you receive for the needs of the city that you perceive at that time, rather than having them preordained to go to a particular use that was historically put into law. So what we're trying to do here is untie our hands in the future so that it isn't dedicated, without any discussion, to the use that Counselor Ives prefers, but I frankly prefer, and I think most executive and legislative bodies would prefer to have more flexibility rather than a prescribed use for a particular fund.
If I can respond to that, now we know what it's being used for, and some of that is affordable housing, which affects my district quite a bit. And to say we're going to remove that and put it in an area where we may or may not use it—
Well, right now, it isn't being used for anything. There is no revenue.
Mayor Weber, I believe—and maybe finance can confirm this—I think the annual revenues currently from all of the—all of the areas outlined in the economic development land section, there's exemptions, basically. I believe it's in the $300,000 range. Is that right? And then—so we have not received any revenues from Santa Fe Estates for a while, is my understanding. So we have not been relying on this source of funds anytime recently, and this would be probably—well, it depends. I guess we could lease it, so that would be potentially lower than a sale. So we don't know if it'll be, you know, small amounts leased, a whole amount sold in the future, but we have not been relying upon proceeds from this particular land.
Yeah, I understand that, and we will be, hopefully, at some time, receiving those. Really, again, just concerned that—I mean, it almost—the way you describe it, it sounds like a slush fund.
No, no, it's the general fund. The general fund is the general fund. It means you—it means that when we create a budget—
The general fund is dedicated to specific departments as well. It's not just for their use, for whatever they—you know, they have to come through the governing body.
That's right. It's an opportunity for every department to make its case for the highest and best use of our dollars, whether it's for affordable housing or for more people working in parks and recreation when it comes to deal with issues that may involve other matters you care about. Other discussion? Counselor Harris?
Just clarification. I mean, the way it stands right now, you know, under B, all net proceeds from any sale or lease of city-owned land shall be deposited in the Economic Development Fund, subject to the following provisions. So—and then under Santa Fe Estates, the only full language is just able to net out infrastructure costs, and then the balance would go to economic development, would not go to housing. It's very specific. And quite frankly, I—when I think about the initiatives in the economic development, I have a hard time saying what they are. I don't think we've suffered from lack of funds in our economic development division. So I think that—I—you know, to me, it's just kind of getting ahead of it. I realize that we haven't completed any negotiations with Santa Fe Estates. Maybe something like this provides a little bit of impetus for the city anyways to bear down, to see if we can't put something together for—you know, to go into the general fund, go through the process of allocation, and then maybe it's housing, maybe it's economic development, maybe it's some of the other areas that I think are important that are going to need support. But anyways, I'll be interested to hear the vote.
Thank you. Counselor Ives?